Yeah, so just so we all know I'm being recorded and the rest of you are there.
That's okay.
So to call to order and begin with routine business, I guess I'll ask for an approval of the agenda we all saw last night. Do I have any comments on the agenda that Michael sent around last week?
No comments.
Hearing none, I will call or here entertain a motion to approve the agenda.
I second.
We should make a motion.
No, make I make a motion to approve the agenda.
I second.
Thank you. All in favor of approving the agenda?
Aye.
I have a hard time seeing the screen. Okay, and against? So it sounds like the motion carries. I'm in favor also Charles. And just to carry the other bit of routine business, if we have any comments on August's meeting minutes that were also sent around last week? Hearing none, we should have a motion or I will make a motion to approve the August meeting minutes.
I second.
Okay, thank you. All in favor of approving the minutes as written?
Aye.
Or? Motion carries. Okay, so with that, we'll go move on to new business and pass it on to Michael. Thank you.
I'm going to project to make sure my voice reaches the mic. Can you hear me? Okay, David? And David? Okay. So I shared some hopefully still helpful written updates with the members of the board in the pre reads. But as usual, a few key points that would be helpful to dive into. Our enrollment is not as strong as it needs to be. We're not in any kind of a danger zone, but right now with applications that are underway, we would end up at about 95% enrollment. We budget for 98% enrollment, so we do need to be pushing. We've renewed some of our digital marketing, our videos on Facebook continue to get referrals. But this will, this will continue to be an area of focus for us to make sure that 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 we're serving as many kids as we intend to. The bright spot in enrollment is our aftercare is very popular with a long waiting list. As I put in the written notes, a lot of credit to to our director Diane and all the teachers who've been working to make that happen. We are hopeful that if we can hire at quality, we may be able to expand that program and offer a few more seats. But we're being deliberate about that to make sure that, you know, everything, everything is in place. Speaking of hiring, we do have adults in every classroom. And we have the strong overall teaching staff that we talked about last month is in place. And we'll talk a little bit in a few minutes about the fruits of that. Like many schools, we wouldn't mind having a little more success in the hiring market. In our case, we are in, we are short of in-house substitute teachers right now. And that creates difficulties when someone's relative passes away or somebody calls in sick. In some cases, we have co-teachers who can just cover it. In other cases, we have to scramble a little bit more and use other members of our staff, and that's disruptive to their jobs. So we are continuing to recruit and hire. We do have two teachers who we expect to start with us in mid to late October. Who are experienced teachers and, you know, will lead their own onboarding, but I think can help our, help our staff. But the hiring will continue. I was saying to one of our board members before the meeting, I think it's realistically, it's a 12-month cycle at this point. It's there's really never a non-hiring season, and so we need to, we need to build our operation accordingly. The most important updates as usual are the academic updates. By the way, if we oh, to the question, are there any openings in kindergarten? We would love to talk to anybody offline who knows qualified teachers. I'll put it that way. But academic updates, I'll ask Principal Delly Ness to talk a little bit and recap some of what's already been shared with the education committee and just share some updates about what's been going on academically about a month into the new school year.
Sure, yes. I'll share some of the updates that I've shared with our education and accountability committee. We talked about flows and grows as they are aligned to the school-wide priorities that I have established for this school. And so some of just the key flows for our school. We've had a strong start with our coaching model here at our school. And so that relationship between deans and teachers right now is really strong. Good relationships, coaching has started. We've been having what we call our old threes, one-on-ones. Feedback is being provided. We've been using Whatstone, the platform that we talked about, launched this week. We've been giving live feedback in classrooms. And so that strong culture of coaching and receiving and providing feedback has started early in the school year, and it's something that we're really proud that we've been able to accomplish that. We've also have been able to accomplish really strong buy-in from teachers in responsive classroom practices. That was one of our key areas of priorities that we established earlier to the school year. We did a lot of training during our summer institute with our teachers on the implementation of responsive classroom. And so we've really received no pushback, our responsive classroom, which in previous experiences, there's always a couple that do. And here we've really, I've just seen the teachers really embrace it and ask for feedback, ask for observations. How can I improve? And so that's really wonderful to see. And then one of our big accomplishments is that we've started interventions early on. And so last year, our response to intervention program started about December, January. This year, we used data that we collected right from the end of the last year and the summer to inform who would receive intervention. And we've been able to start that from the first week of full school, our first full week of school. And so that's also a pretty big accomplishment in comparison to where we were last year. I think some areas that we continue to explore and grow along the lines of responsive classroom. I think the area that we're targeting now is teacher language. That's a key component of responsive classroom, and it's usually the part that's most challenging for adults to switch. And so we're being very strategic in providing that feedback for our teachers and for giving them the practice opportunities and staff meetings and PPs and in those one-on-one coaching meetings. And then we're also, one of the other challenges that we're having, as we talked about staffing, particularly in our first grade team, we don't have a grade level chair yet established for that team. And so that's a great level where we have new teachers to leave. And then we have some of our teachers who are less experienced there, so there's not a strong grade level chair yet. And we're hoping that possibly one of the two hires that comes in October can possibly fulfill that role. But at the moment, we do not have a grade level chair for first grade. And then we're continuing to push it. Of course, it's the beginning of the school year. Two of the other big priority areas under academics was a focus on instructional rigor and progress monitoring. And so we've started strong with responsive classroom, and now we have to dig into the academic piece and consume a bunch of progress monitoring and instructional rigor.
Thank you. Would you like to say also a couple of words, Delly Ness? You had reminded me about some recognition we got about last year's intervention.
Yes. So we were part of a research study conducted by Raza and where they followed the interventions that a number of schools conducted here in New York City and in other states. And so we were one of the schools that were highlighted with some of the biggest growth within that research study. And they also provided us an additional $20,000 due to the work that we were able to accomplish there.
Well, I should have shared that ahead of this meeting, but we'll make sure we circulate that report so everybody can read that and what they had to say about about the leadership team and the intervention team last year. Any questions on academics before moving?
Yeah, I think my, my question, I think is similar to that, the one that Lauren was asking, or maybe it wasn't. For, for intervention work, is it like targeted or is it, are you basing it up of like, what data is being used?
So we use, we use our step data for targeted interventions. And then we also use our math data for math in terms of figuring out who receives these now.
All right, thank you, Delly Ness. I wanted to talk a little bit about COVID safety next. You can't go a day without thinking about it. We, first of all, I should say that, as I mentioned in the, in the written updates, we did adopt the policies that we reviewed here with just one little tweak. And so those have been in place this school year. Thankfully, to our knowledge, we have not any, had any positive cases associated with the school. I don't think that will last forever, despite our best efforts. But we are continuing to follow our protocols. Just today, we had a couple of students with a little cough. We all feel, have a gut level of feeling this isn't COVID, but they're isolated and they're, they're cut apart for our procedures. There are a couple of procedures that we do need to consider. First of all, we've been in contact with the DOE regarding ways to potentially facilitate the bi-weekly random screening of students that we need to set up. So they've linked us up with the vendor that we can use free of charge for bi-weekly testing of 10% of our students. Matthew Padilla has been working with that to figure out the start date and the exact logistics of when that can happen. I think they were more optimistic, but I'm, I'm going to put my money on October 12th. Just figuring that there's some probably delays built in on top of what they would estimate. The way this works is it's not the deep swab anymore. It's a small swab in the front of the nose, so. So that's good. There is parental consent required. We are confirming, but I think we would be able to do that through the Parents Square app, which is HIPAA compliant. Just to save everybody some paperwork. And whenever they come in, we would have to designate an area in the school where students are taken to for testing and then returned to their classes. So we've been, you know, pushing to get these meetings and get this information as quickly as we can. And we will be sharing more formal communications with parents once our leadership team has a chance to flesh out all the details and talk about the rollout date. I want to cover one other topic and then take, take any COVID questions. We, we also have probably all seen in the news that there's a possibility of vaccine. Depending on the company, either ages six through 12 or five through 12 in the works from some of the pharmaceutical companies. Not much to say there other than it's grounds for hope. That could be really helpful. At this time, we know that we would have a lot of communication to do with our community in that same spirit of respect that we approach the communications around staff vaccinations. But that, that motto from last year of, you know, keep us safe and keep us open would definitely apply if we have additional opportunities here. At this time, we don't have reason to believe that this would be mandated for students. But we do believe again, it could help us stay safe as a community. So as we receive more information, all of us about when that might be available, we'll just continue to see what's possible there. But until COVID is a thing of the past, we do know that, you know, any given day, it's possible we could have to call a class or, or a floor or a grade level or even the whole school into quarantine. And so it's just another reason why we're, we're planning to follow our protocols and also, you know, have our, our technology ready as best we can in case that happens. So I don't know if there's any questions about the COVID piece, but that, that's, those are the highlights for where we stand right now.
All right. To confirm, you said expecting through this, through the BOE, the company, the, the, October 8th?
October 12th is my, my estimate.
You're like conservative.
They're saying in a week or two, but I think it's going to be a little longer. And the DOE itself does not provide any of the medical services. It's just that thanks to the lawsuit, they will pay for it.
Right. That happened every two weeks.
It happened every two weeks. Now, we have seen that the DOE itself has changed some policies to shift to every week. I don't know what you guys have seen at the networks where you work. Our, our guess is that that may become a mandate, in which case we would then be working probably, hopefully and expectedly with that same vendor to do a weekly schedule instead.
Yeah.
From our end, we've been working with elevation testing and the DOE's effort that it will supplement so that we can do a greater percentage on a week-to-week basis. So I think, I mean, yeah, I think you might want to, I mean, for you, you might want to consider how those two will end up relating with one another. You might ultimately be able to increase at the very least your percentage on a bi-weekly basis, maybe what do you like 20, 30%?
So we will definitely keep everybody posted on that. And I should also mention, although I didn't list it here, on Thursday, we will be beginning our outdoor recess. We've had a couple of rain delays and a couple of days of practicing walkthroughs and things like that, but we're really looking forward to adding that to our region. I know the kids are too. So facility planning, so this in parallel with all of our work on this campus, there's been work to think about what comes next, and I'll turn it over to Roberto.
Thanks, Michael. Can everyone hear me?
Yes.
Everyone in the room can hear me, let's just put it to the record. As you know, the work that I'm doing is on a couple of three different fronts. Primarily, I'm concerned with where our fourth and fifth graders are going to be. And we've been working diligently with our BBI project management team members that this board authorized the study a number of months ago. I can safely say that the study is complete. And I can safely say that if we were to be able to get access to the entire building, then we will have room for grades four or five. And that's the good news. We are confident that we'll be able to develop the full space. A lot depends on two things. Whether we lease the space going forward, which is the real possibility. Or whether we buy the entire campus, and which is another possibility. We're not prepared to discuss those points today because we're still in discussion with the owners of the building. And the owners are agreeing to discuss that with us this week. And we'll have more to report on that at the coming board meeting. But I will say that the work of our BBI project management team, in addition to the work of our architects, Pell Overton, have really put together not one design, but many designs across many iterations with many different functional shifts and changes to be able to say, we can afford to do this. And that, and it's just great. We'll be sharing all of those with you as we get closer to the more likely option. We're going to go from column A and column B, because right now it's just a big. I don't want to call it a laundry list, but we're still fine tuning what that, what that should look like. And again, it's not the actual, well, this is where grade one's going to be, or this is where grade two is going to be. The process has been, this is how many classrooms we need, this is how many toilets we need, this is how many cafeterias we need. And we're confident that we have a plan to do all of that. So I'm very happy about that. The other part of this is how do we pay for this? And we get a significant rent subsidy from the DOE. And because of that, we're able to budget for the coming years in a way that whether we lease the space directly or whether we buy the building directly, we will have enough money to be able to carry that forward. Again, is this still in the preparation stages to bring a full proposal to the board? That's going to be complete. But I feel very voided by the fact that we have some really top-flight people working on this, and, and I'm grateful. I know Michael has shared some of these plans with the team, and, and we've gotten good feedback there. So those two pieces of information on facilities are very important. Are there any questions on the facilities planning for grades four and five? Yes.
Is there a projected date for the other tenants leaving the building?
Yeah, we have one other tenant. Well, actually, that's a good question. The projected date that we've heard, and this is not public information, nor am I going to make it public information. But we know that the Chase Bank will be moved. I'm not ready to say it's going to happen this day or this day. But that's going to allow the space available for us to be able to make a proposal to fill that space with extra classrooms. As far, as far as the pharmacy is concerned. The pharmacy is also part of this campus footprint. There is a long-term lease with them. And so Thursday, we're meeting with the landlord to get more details about how long that lease is going to be. And so we'll have more information about that as well.
Yeah, I think I overheard that the Chase Bank is closing December 16th. That they, everyone who has Chase account already got letters saying that's going to be their last day.
Our board member said that? Not political.
This is all over Facebook. Like, does anybody know what's happening? I didn't want to mention anything.
No, that's what I've heard as well.
Yeah.
I don't need to detail, but now we're going to, but that space is that is a low, tall ceiling, right? So it's like the four stories were taken up by a big beautiful space. It's a triple height space. And so you've got room for one floor and then a second floor and then a third floor in the same space. It's really amazing. And if you look at inside the other side of our school, if you go to the third floor of our school of the, it's hard to describe because this is an interesting shape place. But the third floor of the existing school is actually the highest floor in the bank. The thing was that they cut the bank in the third and built out additional office space or school space from an existing space. So we would fill in the rest of that space, if that makes any sense.
Yeah.
I'm glad it makes sense to you. I mean, there's no plan to like reserve a space as a big open air.
What I would say is the architects have given us some different concepts. Remember, this was a feasibility study to see what's feasible. So, you know, there would be a whole new layer of looking at all the programmatic trade-offs for our school with our school leaders. But it was just the initial is where are we going? Are we going to be here? How many grades could we hold here? That sort of level of analysis. But then they, our architects have also put some real thought into how actual scenarios could work, which are very creative, that could be inspiring and take advantage of some of those elements.
And because it's a building that's going to be about 100 years old, we really take advantage of the arch windows. You could see it on the, on the billboard, on the, on the electronics. We've taken advantage of the height, Charles, as well, some of the spaces will have extra ceiling height. And, and it's, it's just going to be a really good use, creative use of that existing triple height space. And if down the road, we can gain access to the pharmacy, that even creates even more space for other grades, maybe in the future. So we're still at the point where after our meeting with the owners on Thursday this week, we'll have a better sense in the coming weeks as to what's really doable. And they come to the board with a full set of options that the finance committee will review first, and then the board will be able to ratify afterwards. Any other questions on facility? I also want to go on the record that Michael, you know, started this relationship with the Grace Baptist Church and the pastor there and for a very economical grant that was given by the Friends of Leap Academy back to the school. We were able to have a wonderful playground facility. So Michael, congratulations on getting that playground space done and, and moving forward in that regard. And great, and our friends of wish us all well.
Thank you. Yeah, we, we appreciate the church's partnership. Looking forward to Thursday to see how that all works out and see if it's playing. I appreciate that. Okay, I will move on to new business. We have an additional item originally slated for new business. I take accountability that I don't have the very final draft of the family handbook, which we were meant to approve tonight. So that will be ready as soon as possible. We do have to make sure that it's, it's completely ready, but it also needs to be implemented because after all, we're into our new school year and have had some nice webinars and other communications with parents. So I take responsibility for getting that in front of you all as soon as we can, likely offline between meetings and then an official vote next month. We, we do have the revised safety plan, which was circulated as a pre-read. The safety plan is something that all schools have to do. It's a pretty standard format. Our original safety plan, when we first launched, was not in what the police and DOE or SED, you know, now sort of advise. And so we took a crack at updating this and putting this together with help from our NYPD liaison last year. Matthew made updates based on this year's policies. It's the sort of thing that we'll continue to update. But I hope everybody had a chance to look at that and then it made sense. And those of you who may work in other charter schools that sort of was familiar to you how it was all set up. So I don't know if there's any, any questions or discussion on the revised safety plan or anything else to?
My, my only question, and it's small. It's just, is there any reason, do we, do we have to add in the new addition of the whole emergency protocol? I only ask because it was a change to the DOE and then one that we, at my school, you had to then turnkey. I don't know that you're beholden to it since you're in private space, but I, that was my only wondering.
That's a good question. It was, I was not aware of that being a mandate that would come down to us in private space. But I know there is a world of co-location requirements that hit co-located charter school. Sometimes we're, we're not even aware of that.
Can you describe that? I'm curious because I'm also working with schools that are in private space, so I don't think that we have to.
Yeah, I mean, I think so the whole, as I understand it, is meant to be like, to give more clarity in like that, for example, like in missing child, child protocol, there has been tendencies to like call a soft lockdown and a, and a shelter in. And a whole is meant to like, understand like the part like is a mixture of both in the context of typically of a missing child happening or something that would require both those activities to happen.
As opposed to like dangerous insurance bill.
Exactly. Yep. It's supposed to be a little more nuanced because it became more like, it happened more often.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, I, again, I haven't heard about that mandate, but it, it sounds like a best practice. So for that reason, I can make sure that we go back and look and evaluate that against what we have. That being said, I think it would be a good idea to approve the plan if it's approvable otherwise.
I feel comfortable with it. Strong recovery spaces doesn't cover this, really. So I can make a motion to approve the plan with the, as it is. A second.
All in favor?
Hi.
Favor? All right. Sorry, my thing was muted. I apologize.
Charles provided the voiceover. So that teamwork. Thank you all. Um, okay. So our agenda now turns to committee reports, um, starting with finance. Uh, I believe our friend Bob is on along with our chair, David.
Good, good evening, everybody. Um, by way of financial updates, uh, this particular month, considering kids only came back a few weeks ago. Uh, there's not a lot of material movement, uh, to the budgets. Um, our budgeted surplus, uh, for this fiscal year was $625,000. Uh, to Michael's point earlier, um, enrollment is a little precarious right now. By no means are we like up against like a deficit posture or anything. Um, but just for this board to, uh, kind of understand, uh, on average, at a base, uh, each student that we are short of our budgeted enrollment, which was 333 scholars, uh, will be a $22,000 hit to our bottom line. Um, and so a handful, you know, so every five students works out to a little bit more than a hundred thousand dollars just for like, uh, nuts to bolts, apples to apples comparison. So, um, to, we, we will be making that enrollment and hopefully hit our target enrollment of 333. That being said, a hundred and ninety thousand dollars, how we were to be expect to be running this.
Um, I'm afraid your audio is breaking up.
Point of the year, uh, and our cash shy of a million. Uh, we look good. Um, the per pupil billing portal, uh, for our first invoice of the year with actual student data, uh, opened today and will be, uh, submitted by September 30th. Uh, so we will be able to report back to this board, um, kind of what like our, our, our first line in the sand numbers, uh, with regards to actual student enrollment, uh, at the next board meetings. And we will update our financial forecasts accordingly, uh, and go from there. Um, so that's kind of the, uh, year-to-date financial summary. Um, and then just the other point I'd like to bring up is, uh, the school's annual financial audit, uh, started, uh, the Tuesday after Labor Day. Uh, so we transferred, uh, your general ledger and all of your accounting books, uh, over to our accounting firm, uh, BDO, uh, who's managing the audit this year. Uh, same people that managed our audit last year, except their shop got bought by like a very large national accounting house. Um, so, uh, we've been having a little bit of back and forth. Um, but you know, our timeline is the same as last year. We will present our financial audit to this board uh, at the October meeting and then, um, get everything submitted to the state education department, um, by November 2nd.
Look, I think the, uh, the big takeaways from the finance committee reports, um, for this month uh, were that the spending was more or less on target. I think within about $28,000 of the budgeted expenditure. Uh, that seemed to have come from a little bit of additional overtime and things that we, you know, Michael seems to really full shakeout as the year that goes on into more regular cycles. Uh, but the big, um, the big flag is obviously the enrollment. Uh, the budget enrollment was 333 students. That's, uh, you know, that's a close to a dozen more, I'd say than, uh, than probably were in the enrollment numbers that Michael presented. And so, uh, you know, that would make the numbers a lot closer than presenting a, you know, upwards of half a million dollar deficit. Uh, we'll get that confirmed. And obviously enrollment is not a fixed number. It will not be fixed after we submit this number in September. It will continue to move up and down as students attend class, don't attend class, join the school, leave the school, et cetera. So it's always something that we're working on, making sure we maintain and worthy of, uh, of monitoring. And, uh, and we'll continue to work that through, through that. Uh, but in terms of expenditure, at least, um, the school has really gone into spending only what it, what it planned to, uh, to deliver the, uh, the product of this year so far.
On the school side, what, what's enrollment? Like, what's the follow-up for looking like on the school-based team side? For like a student who's missed several days or calls or how are we handling that?
Yeah, um, so we've put in a process, uh, our VP is now in charge of following up with our just created our attendance protocol, which is the person um, who gets all of the notifications of any tardiness, any sort of, you know, concerns of the student is being flagged because they haven't been in school this amount of time. Um, and she's the one who's following up and making no calls, um, for those students that were still missing or for whatever reason hasn't come to school. Um, and she's become the point person of those conversations and creating the system of at this amount of absences, it requires immediate school, it requires a letter. Um, still working out some of the things there to be completely transparent in terms of getting that up and running. Um, but I think that we're at a better place than we were the previous two years because we have a point person who's designated, um, as such that you're responsible for that. Great, yeah.
Is there, do we have an eye on what percentage of, uh, or spread population that we have like shore up and fill some of that gap financially? I know like, you know, I think in that, I don't know how many like over sixty percent category vote that we have to help like close some of that deficit. I don't know.
Yeah.
If it's substantial or not.
No, that's a great question. Uh, we talked a little bit about this in the committee. First of all, Bob and his team do a good job of working with Mr. Sanchez, who runs our special education. So that as much as possible, they're budgeting based on, on real numbers. That being, and billing based on, of course, current numbers. That being said, I, I, from a program side, I know we have a number of students who we expect to be going through the IDP process. And so for that reason, I think there's gonna be a modest uptick in special education funding as their needs, uh, get recognized by the DOE. I don't think it's, uh, it, it, we're not talking about like there, it wipes out the entire difference, but there definitely is a countervailing factor as we go through the year. Yeah. And of course, sometimes having a student who has a need that isn't in an IDP is costly in its own way, whether it's aid time or paraprofessional time or just disruption. So getting that official and getting additional resources for them can almost have like a double effect. So, yeah, that's a good question. Third thoughts on the finance committee?
I mean, Amy, is our like goal to get to 333 or to get like, are we ballparking, get probably like above it in the next couple of weeks and then account for attrition? So we're saying that like our budget is, is based off of 333, but are we higher?
I would love to get to that point.
Yeah.
I don't think it's realistic to aim much higher because we don't practice backfilling all that in third grade. Um, and so anytime we take any attrition in third grade, it's like a, almost like a lost seat. And of course, um, our, a number of our classrooms are physically full. So we don't have the flexibility we might in a normal year to just, or in a normal building to just add another desk.
Yeah. Great.
Yeah.
And are all the seats in second grade?
We have some seats in Kinder and we have some seats in the second grade. And we still have a pretty, uh, I don't remember the number, but a decent waitlist in first grade.
Kinder and second are the ones where we're hoping for new students.
Correct. Yeah. And we love to get, we love to get applications from all three because I, I, I always forget to, to use this term, but we do like to talk about the waitlist as the likely list because it's likely to get an offer sooner or later. Yeah, I'm sorry.
No, I was just gonna check my understanding that we have a waitlist in first. We don't have a waitlist in second too.
Correct.
Great.
I would also like to just point out that a 12-student enrollment shortfall at this time is very, very modest considering a number of the schools that we work with. Uh, citywide kindergarten enrollment has been a very big problem this year. Um, and it just as a point of reference, like we work with another school that has a brand-new facility in the South Bronx. Uh, they budgeted for 400 this year and they currently have 202. So, um, I, 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 I feel okay, relatively speaking, I feel okay about this.
Yeah.
That's shared. I mean, without driving any, I mean, you're double-digit across networks of schools. So I mean, you're, we're not alone, but that's why I guess with the, my question about the sped funding is to, I guess, hey, I don't know that the, like, I think given where we're at, that's this in the context of New York City as a whole, that it's really not to say that it's nothing because it is something, but it isn't. Panic.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Are people just opting out of school or are there fewer kindergarteners this year? A lot of people are moving.
Yeah.
A lot of people are moving. A lot of people left the city with, with younger kids. And then there was already a K decline like two, three years ago. Schools were already starting to close because of that. Wow. And there's also a few doing a lot, doing homeschooling, especially for kids. Cause they think they can do one more year.
Yeah. I think the report was 12, 14% drop-off from last year's members. And then that doesn't account for what happened two years ago.
Yeah.
So.
With a really strong AF elementary or something in, in Bedside that closed two years ago because they just couldn't build up enrollment.
Well, all the more reason to keep a close eye on it. It's great to have everybody's perspective on this. David, would you like to move to the executive committee?
Sure. I'm not much, I'm not sure the executive committee has much to report on this, uh, this month. Charles and I, yeah, reached out to most of the other board member staffs and discussions with them about their roles going forward. I think that that and other personnel matters will be, uh, solidified hopefully during the executive session after this meeting and voted on in the next meeting. Charles, do we have anything, uh, of, of other substance?
Uh, no, you just, uh, that covers it.
And, uh, academic community?
Uh, yeah, we might yesterday, uh, my whole was able to join as well for them. Um, whenever some of the updates that Dylan has shared at the beginning of this, uh, session with a like focus on how the staffing is fleshing out and how they're really being like very creative with the stuff they have in-house. Um, to fill roles in a, in a thoughtful way and also be ready to bring on more people, the right people to fill more. Um, and also some of the stuff that she shared about the the teacher relationship and what that coaching is looking like and the miss coaching of those coaches looking like, which is great. Um, and then we started to explore a bit about what the academic program would be for individual students who would have to quarantine when we come to that place. And the team has already done some thought about that. Um, but for, let's say it's one student out of class who has to quarantine because of an outside situation, um, how we make sure they don't fall behind. And so the team is working really thoughtfully on that. And there's gonna be some more updates, be it simulcast into classes or uh, instant work or whatever. Um, there's a whole set of options that schools are, are looking at and it sounds like we can do some of that research and exploring what, what they'll be doing and making sure they're ready for that, um, in the future. No?
I have an unrelated point. Uh, it's unrelated to this conversation, but it is related to the morale of our team and our teachers and our staff. I have to congratulate Matthew and Maida and Michael for a new benefits program. Uh, we have now implemented, having gone through a number of them since our launch. But the new program, hey, obviously that is, man, my premium went down 30%. You don't think that makes me happy? So, uh, you know, when you can do that across the board for employees, that's a big deal. And the package itself has a lot more benefits added to it. So good due diligence. Good taking care of our teams and our employees. Keep it up.
Thank you. We don't get a lot of HR testimonials.
I do Yelp reviews too.
Yeah.
See Just Works advertises. If you see this, possibly just seem like saving.
I think they have swept up most of the former clients of Little Bird HR, uh, who were sent back into TriNet. Uh, they've, they've been on a sales spree, uh, so far, so good. We're still in the, on the onboarding process, but, um, yeah, I'm glad, I'm glad to hear that. Um, we did, we did try within the realm of our budget to, um, find a, a provider that could give us some savings and, and also, um, Matthew pushed very hard behind the scenes about this too, to make sure that the affordability was there. So we now do have a, a plan that has uh, no employee contribution for health insurance. If, if you choose to go that way, and that's what's best for your family. And it's nice to have that option. So, yeah, we, we appreciate the Just Works partnership and we'll keep everybody posted on how that enrollment and all that is. Good. So I think, uh, board norms and development would be next. Um, if I, if I may, I just wanna, um, say thanks to, uh, those of you who uh, have completed pieces of the onboarding for our new members. David, thanks for dropping off information even today. Um, I will start to get a lot more annoying about this, you guys. Uh, because my goal is to have everything actually done, uh, by the time we meet next month. And, uh, it is an annoying process. So I sort of apologize in advance, but not really because we want everybody to be official.
Um, be trying to spend all three together. That, that might usually.
It's, it's, it's usually better to bundle these things. Yeah. Um, and, um, that, that's all I had to say on board norms and development, but I think that's probably redundant with what David mentioned earlier about the executive committee. I know the, the board plans to talk about specific goals uh, in executive session today. David, is there anything you wanted to add on this one?
I mean, again, just a formal welcome to all the, you know, the new folks. I hope to get your paperwork in because we need you to vote next month. Um, and Michael needs time to submit it. So, uh, so please do him a favor and get that in a timely fashion so he can do that. And, uh, we'd all appreciate.
All right. So next on our agenda is public comments. Um, I think we have a nice number of, uh, looks like mostly parents from our community here tonight. Um, so I'm gonna go in order. Senora Michaka? Michaka? Would you like to make a comment?
We don't do that.
We may have a technical difficulty there. Um, that sounds like dinnertime to me. I'm not an expert, but, um. Ms. Woods, would you care to make a comment this evening?
Um, good evening. Uh, I missed the beginning of the meeting. Not sure if it was covered in terms of staffing, um, but I do know that for my son's class, the original teacher is not the teacher that he has. I am scheduled to meet with somebody from the leadership team tomorrow just to go over what's happening in terms of in the academic instruction in the classroom. But again, you know, I would just say as a parent, um, communication is key. Uh, especially as a parent who, you know, is on top of. communication is key, uh, especially as a parent who, you know, is on top of, you know, the academic wellness of not just my child, but all children are involved and in the classroom. That's it for me. Thank you.
Thank you.
I look forward to speaking with you tomorrow.
Hi, Mr. Buckley. Would you care to make a comment this evening?
Hi, it's actually Daisy. Um, I was wondering, cause I know you guys mentioned that you don't have a grade, like a grade like leader for first grade. So I was wondering if the new person coming on, if they'll be joining a class or like taking over a classroom for the first grade. So I was wondering what the plan is for that.
Yeah. So, um, we're still making some final determinations and, and decisions with where we'll be placing the two new teachers that we will be onboarding. Um, but the goal is to hopefully have one of those teachers possibly join the first grade team. That's what we're hoping for.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Thank you.
And we also, uh, should acknowledge, uh, our, our dean, Deanna Ferreira, who supports that grade level. It's not as if they're without support. It's just in our structure, that role of that grade level chair teacher is an important one. So we do feel when there's not somebody there, but Deanna has been working hard to support them. Ms. Cortez, would you care to make a comment this evening?
Um, well, I, first of all, I just want to say thank you for everything that, you know, you guys from the beginning of the school year, from when my daughter did start, you guys did, um, you know, accommodate a lot of stuff from my, for my daughters and everything, like everything just changed. Like it went from, you know, having like not much to like having a lot of stuff now, you know? And I see the progress and everything that you guys have, uh, you know, um, done. Um, academically as well, my daughter, she, you know, she, we were stuck in a pandemic, um, you know, out of the country. And now to thanks to, uh, Professor Ito and, um, I think Professor Sanchez that gave the extra help to my daughter. Like she was progressed a lot. And as well as for my other daughter, also I, you know, I expect the same thing now that she's starting school. Um, yeah. So, I mean, I, I, everything is going good to me. Everything I, I, I like about the school now. And I did, um, see a lot of progress in the school. So thank you guys a lot.
Thank you so much. We appreciate the, the positive feedback.
Yes, thank you. I can't tell you how much that, that means. Um, and that goes, that goes for all the comments. But it's especially nice to hear when things are going well. So, so we have that balanced sense of how things are going. Ms. Farber, would you care to make a comment this evening?
Sure. Uh, can you hear me?
Yeah.
Yes. I just have a quick question. Well, first I, I want to say thank you, Michael. Um, I know Garrett is very, very excited about the, uh, the playground. So thank you for all your work that you've been doing and obviously all the work that all the board's been doing. Um, just because it came up before regarding the inter, uh, the intervention, interventionist. I was just wondering, I know last year there was discussion about the interventionist also, you know, working with children who may need additional help and also children who may need more challenging work. And I was just wondering, is there sort of a, a, a timeframe as to when those interventionists may be supporting the kids who maybe need some more challenge, more challenging work and what that will look like in, in terms of like extra assignments or something of that nature?
That's a great question. So right now, um, you are correct, our interventionists are, are predominantly focused with our students who need extra supports. However, we have put in place a structure this year, particularly around literacy and guided reading and like good idea that small group where we have everyone who's, uh, an instructional staff member hands on, and we have additional teachers pushing in during that block. Um, so that we can have targeted groups. And so for our kiddos who are reading above grade level, they will have a particular group for them to push their literacy skills. So we're starting there. Um, and I take the feedback and thinking about how we can do the same for math and for the other contents as well.
So if one, just a follow-up question, I know it's only been the first week of homework, but would you encourage us maybe to reach out to teachers if we think that perhaps our kiddo might need something a little more talented to keep them, you know, um, just so that they don't become somewhat complacent? I mean, is that, is that something as opposed to reaching out to the interventionist? I know it's only the first week, but you know, just curious if that's something you would recommend?
I would absolutely recommend that if, you know, if you have questions or ideas on what for the homework particularly and, and, and that you have, whether it's too hard or too easy, that is definitely something that you want to communicate with.
Thank you so much. Appreciate it.
Yeah, of course.
Thank you, Lauren. All right. And I believe our last visitor tonight. Ms. Fernandez, would you like to make a comment this evening?
Jess, hi. Um, you hear me?
Yes, go ahead. Yes.
Okay. All right. Um, yeah, I also want to say thank you, uh, for the opportunity for us being here tonight. Um, while only the comment that I could say is that, um, uh, I appreciate also about all the changes that you are giving them on the school. Uh, my son has been, you know, have been progressing for a lot of changes and he's before, he was having a very difficult, you know, uh, as in reading and math. Now it's like I'm seeing him that you, um, given all the support to him. So I'm actually seeing him that he's progressing on and, and math and the reading. And then the Spanish and it's something that I really feel proud of it. Because I see that all the teachers are really, um, supporting all the kids, not only mine's, but I think eventually in all the kids. And I mean, um, I think I'm, I'm happy. I, I see a lot of, um, changes that you have made in a couple of, I guess, this year. Uh, eventually last year, we had this whole situation about virtual and it was like a bad experience for me because I think as, um, a mom, I'm happy more, more for my son to be mostly in, in school than being at home. I think he learns more being there in person than being at home. Because me as a parent is kind of difficult for, like for me to help my son, you see? So I see also too that, um, Professor Ito make a lot of, um, progress in him. And he's also very happy of, and having him like, uh, eventually I'm helped, he needs the help that he needs. He's always there involved. And then for the other teachers as also.
Thank you so much.
Thank you. We really appreciate that.
Thank you.
Right.
I'm fine.
Big one.
Put her, put in the walker.
Okay. Um, well, Mr. Ito has a fan club. We knew that already.
He's a long-term teacher.
Yeah, he, uh, yeah, Professor Ito's a, uh, interventionist.
And he's popular in our household too.
We're certainly glad to have him and the, and the whole intervention team. The other interventionists haven't all had a chance to build a fan club. He has, yeah. So, all right. So that's it for public comments. I believe our, our next, uh, piece of the agenda is to go into executive session. So technologically, what I will do, um, is, um, for the panelists on the board, uh, I created a different link for David Duick. I will add David Estrada to that. So David, if you can watch your inbox for a minute, David Estrada, I will send you. I will add you to that. Um, and, uh, I will put this computer on mute for a while. If anyone is on the line, um, traditionally what happens is that the board just returns from executive session and votes to adjourn the meeting. So there's not usually a lot interesting to stick around for, uh, but we will keep the feed open until the meeting is ready to adjourn. And at that time we'll come back onto this link.
And it is in fact, my expectation that we will do just that and vote next month, but take this opportunity to discuss, uh, whatever we can get through.
Okay. So was I correct in what I just said, or will there be a vote?
Yes, yes.
Okay, great. So, uh, let me see here. I'm gonna stop sharing for a moment. For me and for the other staff members, I think we can leave this room to the board. And, and, um, I think the board will get started in just a few minutes.
Michael, can you stick for the beginning of this session?
I can. I'm gonna step out to get the technology set up and I'll be right. I'll be back.
Okay. But I'm gonna switch to the other, uh, meeting.
Yeah, and maybe in like two weeks. No. Just gonna stick here. You know.
There we go. There we go.
Try again. Check.